That today is the birthday of our administrative assistant. Happy birthday to you.
Yes.
She's 21, she's fine.
Well, I was going to have Commissioner Black get up and sing a song to you, but he didn't find that, so. Anyway, thank you, Valerie.
You don't sing, Mark?
Absolutely. So, our next item is Barb Johnson, Lake County roads. Come on up, Barb, and she has gave us some papers for the record here.
I'd like to thank each of you for listening, and this has been an ongoing thing. I want a special thank you to Commissioner Winters for opening the door and giving us this path to try and problem solve. The voices in Christmas Valley are very hostile if you mention the roads. They drag them every day, and the voices are getting louder. They're not going to go away, so, and the roads are just going to get worse if we just keep going, "Oh, my, nothing, nothing we can do." The county, I'm sorry, the Christmas Valley townsite roads do have county road numbers. The original surveying did not have county road numbers, so at some point, the county accepted the responsibility. During the course of the research, the Christmas Valley road, townsite roads, have not been vacated. Some of the roads outside the townsite.
So, are those the 911 naming of the roads, or is that a county road?
No, it's county road numbers.
Okay, so that's news to me.
That, um, and it's, yeah, here, let me, this is a Google map. I'll give one to each of you, and they're all different sections of Christmas Valley, but you can see the night numbers on the Google map.
Do you have one for a road official?
Oh, yes, I do.
If not, we have a copy.
I contacted Google, which is where I got that map from, and they said that when they do their mapping, they use open source documents. If they cannot get the road information through open source documents, they contact the local government, and if they can't get an answer from them, or if they don't cooperate, then they go on to the state level. So, that's the process for Google. So, either they got it from an open source document, or from one of our governments within the state of Oregon. The gravel roads in the Christmas Valley townsite are not comparable to other roads in the other Lake County communities. Silver Lake has pavement, Fort Rock has pavement to a degree, of course, it's really small and tight net. Paisley has pavement. We, we have nasty roads. And historically, Lake County did an ordinance, and we're guessing, well, it was signed in 1961, where you had specified gravel road construction. I pulled out a 1960 State of Oregon book on paving roads. Christmas Valley roads were pavement ready. They were just never paved. Were they intended to be paved? I can't answer that question, but they were pavement readies, which would indicate maybe that was a long-term goal. So, the road conditions as they are are a deterrent for people buying property. They devalue the property based on Oregon ORS. It's in the statutes. If you have a nasty road, your property value is depleted. Easement roads in Christmas Valley are public, private, local access. They can be anything anyone wants them to be, depending on the situation and the agents that you are talking to at that time. When, when people do get together as an easement road and try to maintain their road, yeah, they pay someone to grade it, get the gravel on it, everyone in the area drives on that really good road, 80 miles an hour. The people who made the investment watch their gravel fly 10 foot off the road where you cannot recover it, and once that road is back to a very nasty condition, then people go back to their own nasty road. It's the way it is. And so, there is, you know, if people call up the sheriff's office and say, "Hey, you know, so-and-so, license plate so-and-so is driving down my road at 80 miles an hour," oh, that's a private road. There is no recourse to recover your loss. So, there's a lot of people that just gave up on trying to even attempt to maintain the road because people aren't respectful about it, and they don't have any recourse. Some people are building private roads across their property. Their property is situated such that they can access from a main, from, let's say, the Christmas Valley Highway to their house, going across nothing but their property. That's what they're doing to protect their investment. It would be nice if there were some protections or something, so these people would invest in the easement roads. There is also another problem with the roads, in the townsite, outside the townsite. Oregon has a statute that you are not supposed to block the flow of water to include ditches. Everyone in Christmas Valley who puts in a driveway from the main road onto their property dumps a bunch of gravel and calls it their driveway. We get a lot of rain, a lot of water in those ditches. January of 2017, prime example, we had water everywhere. The roads were absolutely destroyed. We had wet water rapids going down our road, literally. It went down Gloria Road, hit the Christmas Valley Highway, it went east or west. The water going east, went east and flowed pretty good. Of course, there was a low spot, so it could dump into the alkali slick. The water going west hit John Glassby's gravel pit driveway and came back. It washed out rock underneath the highway. It was an absolute mess, you know? That situation, it's not a maintenance situation. It is logistics. It is following statutes, put in a culvert. If everyone starts, keeps filling in that ditch, and there's no culvert, it's going to be a bigger mess years down the road. You know, something has to be done, not just maintenance, but, you know.
There's some renegated in accesses, but we do have permitting process for access to county roads. Generally, will require a culvert, but I, I know exactly why you're saying that. Just to let you know, we do have a process that's supposed to be followed, but policing and all of that is a challenge within itself.
Right. There's all as well, you know, but there's also ordinances, you know, it's supposed to water the road with your handgun pivot, and people do it, and there's no consequences. There's supposed to be fines, there's supposed to be this, that. None of that's happening, you know? And I mean, it makes sense for the farmer that's doing the damage to put the road back in good repair, but that's not my decision. There's, there's county, there are roads throughout the county, county roads, that are being maintained by the county, who serve a few people, one or two families. And, and I did talk to Kevin about this. I got in between phone calls one day. It was a very brief conversation, but he pointed out lots of roads that, you know, he doesn't understand why, you know, the county is maintaining them. They, they don't really serve a purpose other than those few people, and he has those roads. So, what makes sense in Christmas Valley? Can the commissioners, the county, maintain every road in Christmas Valley? That's probably not logical at this point. There's 34 miles of roadway in the Christmas Valley townsite, but it makes sense that we have to start, and to start, it makes sense to cover the essentials. Utilities, Water Tower Hill is a nightmare to get up that road. Dad and I, the last time we tried to drive it, a couple of weeks ago, I, I told Dad, I said, "No." Based on the last time I went up, three years prior, and looking at it now, is we're, the Jeep is old, Dad, let's just stop right here, and we back, back down. But on Water Tower Hill, you got the cell towers, and you have the water. People rely on that water. There's a lot of people, their cell phones is their only phone. If cell tower people and the water tower people can't get up there for their maintenance, oops, would not look in on you guys, that's for sure. So, utilities, public necessities, so, to get up to the Water Tower Hill, that would be South Candy. Parking wreck properties? It would be nice if the county could maintain them, because that is tuberism, and, you know, Christmas Valley's not in a position to maintain those roads. Parking wreck isn't in a position to maintain those roads for access. Since these are county roads with county road numbers, you know, it would be nice if post a speed limit or something, try, you know, take steps to try and get these people slowed down, so there's some recourse. The roads, you know, easements are supposed to be kept in good repair. Your own ordinance, 104, open that up for public access, anyone can drive on it, and people are having fun on those roads. And the people, as an easement road, they have no recourse. They just watch people, you know, do 360s and have a well of a good time. Maybe if the county made that investment maintaining graveling, then, you know, there's some recourse, because now people are screwing up your roads and screwing up your gravel. I have, over the years, driving back and forth, when I lived in bed, driving back and forth, I was back and forth at crazy hours. I'd drive by some, you know, you'd drive by one day, and it's like, "Hey, they gravelled the road, yay, way to go." And then you go by the next day going back home, and you see a car with the trunk open, five gallon buckets shuffling that gravel into their, and stealing it, you know? So, you called the sheriff's office, I did, and I said, "Hey, this car, these are the people, these are the descriptions, they're stealing the gravel up this road." "Oh, that's a private road. So, why should, you know, I mean, it's still their property. Why wouldn't they take the information?" "Well, no, 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 that, that's private property. They have to report it." "Well, if they do call you and report it, wouldn't it be nice if you could say, 'Oh, yeah, we have, we know who did it, we have the information, we'll get right on it.'" You know, I mean, there's just, the Christmas Valley roads are just shuffled, and not my problem, it's put into a dark corner, and that just cannot keep going. And on your list, I have key roads, you know, to give you a place to start. We came up with some key roads that allows, they have multiple accesses, or they allow access to get people safely on and off the pavement for the first half mile. And I think that's about it. For me, but Dad wanted to say something, so I'm going to go back and sit down.
Barb, thanks for all your work. Hold on just a second, and thank you for putting this all out this way. So, I've sort of gone through this, your number one priority, if anything was happened, is the Water Tower Hill or whatever, South Candy, I guess it is. So, when we talked before, we talked about the community coming together and maybe be able to come up with some funds and be able to pay, where we didn't make any money, but the cost, if we were going to blade, or we're going to put some gravel on in place, or whatever. And Carl's sitting here, there's a discussion we had at Road Advisory, that we talked about as our dollars dwindled away, and what people seen over the years of what we've been able to do. So, have you had any luck with trying to pull a community together to look at starting something there, so that maybe your priorities, prioritization list could be, over the next few years, could be?
We, we've got people together, different groups at different times, you know, during this whole process, and the reaction is, you know, for example, sharing costs. You know, people are like, "The county hasn't done anything to help us," and the doors would close, because they've been ignored for so long, they're just, you know, the county's not going to do anything. So, if you were to say, "We're willing to help, and we could take that information back to Christmas Valley," then that would give us something to start that conversation again.
Okay. So, clarification, where we're at today, is because the county over the years did help quite a bit. Clarification over the years, the county has helped over the years quite a bit. It's changed, that, that structure's pretty much changed, because you're not seeing county graders on these public ways like you used to over the years. So, the county has funding and lack of resources and people is one reason why it's changed quite a bit on all roads. Even the true honest Owen County roads aren't getting graded like they used to. With all that said, the county has been at the table, just to clarify, and we, as Board of Commissioners, previous Roadmaster, current Roadmaster, allowed certain things, and we still will, but I, I think it's a time that you and I talked, for the partnership to look there, and, and trying to find the resources, and trying to be able to find the time to put all this down. It's not going to be able to be fixed all at one time, but if there's some financial resource or gravel and different things, and we work with our, our road official, and with our Road Advisory, it might be able to come up with a start, or a solution. And the meeting today, when you come to the public, does step that direction. So, thank you very much, and I really appreciate what you put out here.
Yes. Thank you, Barb.
Hi, Ron.
Hello. Chairman. Don't make any hitches. Ron Johnson, I'm Barb's father. I, when we started getting serious, I drove and did some surveying. Paisley has seven miles of paved road. If you go up Bill Street, there's a sign up alongside Chewalkan River. Nine miles, very crooked, narrow road. This nine miles was paved. At the sharp, bad corners, there was a paved parking spot, so that if two cars met, one could get out of the way. Now, that's safety and reasonable, but you go up the hill like you're going to go to the dump at Paisley, and the county road goes on further, five more miles. It's truck quality paving. It serves one business, ZX Ranch. Then, it continues to the end of their feedlot. All that pavement for one person, for one company. Silver Lake had about 14 miles of pavement, and the road going up the east side of Thompson is paved up to where the businesses are. I would like to see the west side Thompson Valley Road made a county road. If you follow that, and you go into Climas County, that is the shortest district distance for North Lake County to go to Highway 140, and it comes out close to Bly, between Bly and Beatty. Fort Rock, not much pavement, but their gravel roads have been graded and regraded until there's absolutely zero problem with them. All I'm saying is, I think it's time we got a little help in the north end around Christmas Valley in that area, to compensate for what these other districts have gotten ahead of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Carl?
Yes. Did it sound great? Morning, Carl.
As a member of the Road Advisory Committee for twenty-two years, I'm a little familiar with the road situations in the townsite of Christmas Valley. I'm very much aware of what the county has done in the past. I'm also very much aware of what today's program with the county is, and that's basically no maintenance on county roads that the county determines is not the county road. That omits the townsite of Christmas Valley from county road maintenance. My issue, which you've all heard me before, I look to the commissioners to solve this dilemma. You're our elected officials. We actually pay you to do it, but the townsite of Christmas Valley doesn't have the elected capacity, elected official, to spearhead a group or a solution to this dilemma. But it's really not needed. We already have elected officials that govern the whole county. Christmas Valley is part of the county. So, I look, as you've heard me say before, I look to the commissioners to spearhead, provide leadership to resolve this issue. And one of the main reasons is to research what Barb has discussed, and the group has with, this, that group has been meeting for months trying to figure out what to do, I'm sure you're aware of, but to actually legally find answers is going to take legal counsel. That's going to take dollars. The county already has legal counsel we could use to maybe help research some of this stuff. Some of this stuff that could be looked at legally. The county receives gas and licensing fees as part of your road funding. I don't know anywhere where it says those funds can't be divided, or they can't be used on some maybe indiscriminate road. The roads are within the county. I don't know, you know, when you get to your, your bill payment, that's based on the populace. Maybe it could be, once the county receives it, maybe some of those funds could be divided once again on populace, because the townsite of Christmas Valley, actually, as far as you're governing the county, this is the largest concentration of people that you govern on some of these issues. So, I think there's, there's areas that a person could look at legally, but to get the resources and the connections to actually make this come to a solution, it's going to take leadership, and I look to you for that leadership. Not to tell the community that, "Why don't you guys get together and figure out what to do?" How could we do that? I'd like for someone to tell me how we could actually do that, to find a legal way and the funding to maintain the roads in Christmas Valley without involving you or your legal counsel. I don't know how to do that.
One thing I'd like to say first is, thank you for acknowledging our leadership, because you didn't acknowledge this Board of Commissioners and the amount of money we put into the existing roads, not these public ways, in North Lake, as our funds are going down to try to preserve the hay and everything going to market out there. We tuck and honestly neglect it, several other paved roads within Lake County, to make sure that those commodities get to market.
Absolutely.
And that, that comes from this leadership of this board here.
Yes.
And at quite a great cost. Now, then, back to these public ways. We sat in Road Advisory meetings, and Carl, you sat there, and you agreed to look at locally, trying to find a way that a lot of these public ways, not all of them, but some of these public ways, try to leverage some dollars from the locals, and reimburse the county to do a little bit of, whether it's grading, or maybe put some gravel on. There's some legalities, absolutely. We can check into legality, but it's a, it's a partnership. I mean, we ask, and I appreciate Barb very much that you have these meetings, but we really don't have the resources as far as the people and the money that we used to have. You talk about all the roads that were paved. Today, we're just into preservation mode, as you very much know, we're just preserving those, trying to, trying to keep them going. We have complaints all the time about our regular gravel roads. I appreciate Ron talking about how good the roads are up the ground for Rock, the gravel roads. I have, you're going to ask Kevin, I talked last week, our roads are washboarded, because we don't have the amount of time and the amount of people to get out there and take care of them like we used to. Now, then, that doesn't mean that we can't address these ones in Christmas Valley and look at that, but I do believe that buy-in from this Board of Commissioners and through our Road Advisory, and thinking outside the box that we're, we're getting there. We, we really are. If, if there's not a bucket full of money sitting out there to just take in other roads.
Very well aware of that threat, and I agree. We have had these discussions, and we, those improvements in the north end, we fought for. I've appreciated what the county has done as a whole, since I've been involved in this, because I've seen some things that have really put, actually, Lake County roads at the top. It's not just good roads up there, we've got good roads throughout the county, and I appreciate what the Roads Department does in that respect. But you, you're, you're right, Brad, you, we talked about how we could generate funds to actually provide some maintenance on the townsite roads, and one of them was maybe an assessment on each lot. But here again, I got to go back. How can we do that without legal counsel? How can we do that without the time and the investment of funds that we don't have to generate, to possibly research and figure out how do you do that legally? Because that's probably going to involve some voting, maybe, with the property owners' vote for a $10 assessment on over 2,450 lots, generating $25,000 to start a maintenance program. We can't do that without your help. We're stuck without your help.
Well, I think because of Barb's presentation, I think, Carl, that we do have a reason to talk to legal counsel about some of this, you know, this Google map, and I wish it was bigger, because my eyes aren't so good anymore, but with that said, you know, we can also do the Google maps and look at some of that, because it's kind of surprising to me in looking at this, and so it does need to have further discussion, and legal counsel should be part of that.
Yeah.
And more research. And I just wanted to comment, because you've been involved for 22 years, and it's been very much appreciated to be part of the Road Advisory over that period of time, the pedal payment that you alluded to, I think Lake County, and I won't go on the record saying we're certain, but I think Lake County is the only one that receives a pedal payment of discretionary funds, that has for the last six years, as you know, contributed a quarter of a million dollars a year into the road funding, just to try and keep it propped up, into the existing maintenance plan. So, you know, going forward.
And how much did we fight for in the Road Advisory group? We fought for $500,000.
Oh, yeah.
But we got $250,000. So, I, we all remember this.
Yeah.
And we appreciate the $250,000. Kevin does.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. But, but it still gets back to where just the towns, the people that live in the townsite of Christmas Valley are at loose ends without some authority and legal counsel to resolve this issue.
I, I totally agree, and one of the things that, that I think that I know I'll mention to legal counsel, and I've talked to Kevin just briefly on this, the state provides us with road mileage, and so as we're addressing the townsite roads, now, some are in more dire need than others, but I did not realize this until a couple of weeks ago. Apparently, Lake County has somewhere very close to 400 miles of these roads. So, as we start to perform an action, it has to be repeatable, because it doesn't matter what community it's in, it doesn't matter what the situation is. As we start to do something with some of these non, I'll just say, non-county roads, we have to be able to repeat that, because we will have people, or the future board will have people coming before them and saying, "Well, we want you to spend money on these roads, too." I don't know, you know, where they get that figure from, but Kevin- I don't know, you know, where they get that figure from, but Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, 380?
It was just higher than 380.
Yeah, just short of 400 miles. And I was shocked.
Of, of roads where?
In the county. That are not county roads or state highways or floor service roads or BLM roads, just public access roads. So that's something that has to be in the consideration as we move forward is, you know, if we're faced with that, that's true.
You can't drive all the roads in the north end of county in one day.
No.
Guaranteed, you can't. You don't have enough time in the day to drive them all. I understand that. But, but the county road system, District Five, which I'm involved with, north of Highway 31, there's about 300 miles of road, county roads. Countywide, you all know, there's about 740 total county road miles. Adding this townsite, you're talking three or four percent of the, in miles of the, of what would be added if townsite roads was included in the county road system. So it's not a huge amount of road. You look at it, it's 34 miles, but totally, it's not huge. But anyway, it just, I'm here today to support Barb in that group. And I think it's time that maybe the county took a second look at it, at doing some road maintenance in townsite of Christmas Valley. And it was kind of hard for a couple of you guys to get too involved because you're going to be stepping aside and somebody else can be taking your place. But the issue won't go away, I don't believe, until we have the leadership and the legal counsel to help direct this process to get to where you've got actual road maintenance in Christmas Valley.
Thanks, Carl.
Yep. Is there any other comments on the, or subject? Alan, go ahead.
I have the right to remain silent. I just want to endorse what, you know, what's been said. And, you know, it was just recently pointed out to me that, you know, all the Google, Google maps show a whole bunch of county road numbers. So, you know, we all should have been aware of that, but-
So I guess that, does, does that mean that Google is correct? If it's on there, does that mean that-
Or does it mean that we can Google?
Well, yeah. I, I will check into it. But it's sort of interesting what the process for Google to get to there. I don't remember. I know on the 911 numbering, I remember that very clearly. As far as road numbers, that's interesting.
But I doubt, you know, I guess there are people that drive around in funny little cars. They just arbitrarily pick numbers in the same sort of sequence that-
I don't know.
Yeah, that's going to be something worth looking at.
We'll check, we'll check anything out.
I, I just want to kick in a little bit of history that I'm the only one here, I believe, that was around when the Christmas Valley project began. And it was, frankly, it was a joke around the county, you know, the development and the fleece and the, the people that buy property and this and that, and, you know, called sands in the end and so on. And it didn't, it didn't really have a lot of respect. And, you know, so since 1960, 61, it's, it's come quite a ways. You know, you can still debate what, you know, how much respect, respect that everything deserves, but it has become a viable area. And the, your predecessors have often been really skeptical about spending much money there. And, you know, when there was money in the kitty, it didn't get shared very much. And so, you know, now it's, you know, every year the budget's getting worse and worse and the demand is getting greater perhaps, but it, you know, it really does need to be given some, some serious thought. And I think Carl had a really good point that county council can probably, and, and other employees of the county can probably network around where other road districts are and, and other different circumstances and come up with some ideas. And so really want to endorse that idea that do something positive there. Now, we're in an interesting situation that the majority of the commissioners can come with the future ones with very little pushback. And, you know, that probably isn't going to happen, but, but please really give some serious thought to how we move forward and, and do something that's, that's going to work. And, you know, I guess it'd be interesting to, you know, know all of Kevin's thoughts that he's, you know, a road professional from outside the community and outside the state that, you know, probably has some real interesting thoughts on if we could start over, how we, how we would do it. And, but, but also probably some ideas about, okay, given the present situation, what can be, what obligations can be reduced and what can be increased? So.
Well, Alan, just a couple of quick comments, and I do appreciate that you do remember Christmas Valley back then. I don't go quite that far, but 45 years. And you're right, you know, in being involved with the community greatly back in those days and in my role of working with students that attended Paseo and the, the respect that that community has grown. But it's grown through the community members, you know, and their investment in the community and their willingness to, in a lot of cases, probably take some real risk, you know, whether it's in the business sector or in the home building sector, whatever it happens to be. And I think in this last 12 years, at least I feel that way, we've recognized the community's growth and its desire to be a well-respected community inasmuch as, I mean, these are smaller things, but there's, there, I think they point out how much we do care about Christmas Valley specifically in that we get limited, limited funds for bike and pet. The only place we put in a bike and pet, you know, whether it was something people really wanted or not, we've heard a lot of good feedback over the years, but it was in Christmas Valley. It was on the Christmas Valley Highway, as you know. And so it gave, we expended all the dollars we had, it was 60 some thousand, then we put some additional road dollars in there just to make it a little bit better. Carl came before us a long time ago, relatively speaking, I don't know what it's been, Carl, eight or 10 years, and asked if we could pave the road down to one of the nicest health clinics around. And we did that and paved in from there a little runway for, for motorized scooters or whatever it was. We were approached by, I, the, the group that was wanting to put in adjacent to the beautiful, beautiful flowery park, the nicest park in the county by far and one of the nicest in this part of the state, to put in a parking lot, which we had the road department do. And then we took over once the, the restoring facilities were put in. We said, rather than the community take that on and have volunteers, how about we do that through our maintenance program, which Dave Vermaat heads up with our annex there and will make sure it's well-maintained all the time. Then we can run out in the park and rec district to the airport and the brown field cleanup that we were just talking about. And we turned that land over to the park and rec district. And a couple of years ago, it's probably been more like four or five years ago, we had a couple of properties that it only made sense for the park and rec district, the airport to have those. So rather than sell those, we gave those like $100 to the community. So I just want to reemphasize what you're saying.
Connect organ grant at the airport.
The connect organ grant at the airport, the support to get that down for the repaving. But the main reason I'm bringing all that up is just to say, I agree with you. I think that the community has grown. I think the respect for the community has grown. And I hope we have, in our small part, tried to show that we do believe in the community. And hopefully on this road issue, there's something that can be worked out that's good for the community and good for the whole county. And that's kind of where we're at right now. So thank you.
Okay. So today's a work session, right? Okay. It's, it's difficult to understand how, how, you know, getting very much give and take on a subject like this, you know, and obviously there needs to be more homework and so on. But I, I may have lost to see how we come up with, you know, what's, what's the, the right venue to actually, you know, hash through quite a lot of things and get some maps out and, you know, really talk about different things because-
To address the subject at hand, which is the roads around Christmas Valley.
Yeah. So what is, you know, if, you know, there's ideas and there's responses, but there's not, you know, I guess I'm not quite sure what we do.
So where, where I see it going, Alan, is we have this information laid out by Barb. She's been working locally after the request. So now we have this information. Our road official will do some research, we'll do some research, reach out with Barb. So are you, are you the group, Barb, that's somewhat organized, is just you, are you the contact person? There we go. Because if we try to answer 1,500 different people, it's going to get convoluted. Are you the go-to person on this? So we'll work with Barb, the way I see it. Kevin, you, you see anything that's come before us today, it's all fresh, just a work session, we take it into consideration, then we'll work from there, Alan. That's what I see is analyze your interpretation of what are considered county roads, what Doris says are public ways, collector roads or whatever you want to call them, and we'll work with our roadmaster.
Well, and to me, and you know, any one commissioner can't commit the whole county to anything. But with that said, I really appreciate once again Barb's pointing out of the self-site and the water site road. I think that's going to be one of the first things that I want to take a look at to see what can be done, how we can help make that a drivable road. We do need access up there. It's part of our county.
I, I wrote that down.
Yeah.
Your guy is number one priority, is what I read.
Yeah.
Is, is that accurate, Barb? Is that your number one priority? Do you count-
Access of the table rock there.
Which one?
The water.
Huh?
South going up table rock.
Yeah.
Communications side. Your number one priority.
I think you do the exit part of the maintenance on that. So, yeah. Anyway, what if, now, the next thing in committee things, if there isn't any timeline, then things don't happen very quick either. Should there be some sort of a response time on, on when to get back to Barb with her preliminary set of thoughts?
Well, over the years, and we really encourage people work with their person on the road advisory and for things to come to the road advisory to push on to the board of commissioners. That's one avenue that we've done.
That and me and Barb.
I think it's around March.
Yeah, it might be sooner.
It might be sooner.
That's just a-
But I'm sorry.
That's historically one of the-
Yeah. But as far as the county getting back to Barb on something that, I mean, that's- I believe that we'll be discussing, talking with Barb through our road official and through us in the future. Other thing you pointed out very much, Alan, is that there will be two new commissioners coming on in January 1. And that this isn't a short time discussion or solution. This is looking at it as a plan to go forward and a way to build, fund it, for us to be able to do different things. So it's, it's not rubber stamping with the board that's here today and leave something to try to pick up and fix later. It's a matter of finding the right way for this to drift.
I would encourage Barb to make contact with Mark Albertson, Commissioner of Town, been the liaison for the roads for 12 years. Mark may, may not descend that liaison. And what the election today may be, whatever, but instead of waiting till January 1, to keep Mark and whoever comes on tonight abreast because that would give them information so that when they sit up here, they'd be ahead of the game two months.
That's a plus. One thing you mentioned was about our predecessors and everything, and I, I sometimes can't learn to keep my mouth shut. But over the years, back in 80s, I worked for the road department. I spent almost every winter living in Christmas Valley, from developing the Frederick Street Road all the way out to War Pit. We spent millions and millions of dollars in rock sources there. There's a couple of rock sources that we've invested a lot of money in and we will continue to do that. And predecessors as commissioners, predecessors as employees, we've done a lot of work in North Lake. I've been fortunate enough to be on both sides of it and have quite a passion to try to keep all of Lake County going and see the need. Whenever we talk about the growth in Lake County, Christmas Valley grows as fast as in, in, in part around. And with the agriculture up there and everything been supported. And when you mentioned predecessors, there was a lot of roads paved up there in the 80s and the 90s that were dirt roads as far as that are currently going. You take Christmas Valley Highway, all the, when was it paved in 80s? It was gravel before then, I believe.
Yeah, it was in the 70s.
70s. Yeah, so there, there's been a lot of investments over there. And myself, I got to, I got to experience some of that on the road building side and the maintenance side, hauling out of different pits and seeing the dollars that's been spent in, in that community. Those dollars revolve around whenever you're buying rock from those rock sources. So we, we quit my-
What I, what I was addressing, and I'm not taking it back, is the mindset of the country commissioners over the years. And I'm not blaming you guys. I'm saying way back, there's a lot of chuckles and a lot of, you know, high rollers and all of it. You know, don't worry about it, it isn't going to last, it's just, you know, it's just, just an exercise. And so anyway, you know, that's, I believe that's a fact. And, and I, you know, the, I think in the, in the 50s and the 60s, there wasn't there as much pavement down there either.
No.
And I know there wasn't enough pavement because I drilled those roads. But, you know, it's, all the county has been approved and, you know, and what occurred in my opinion was for the task of about getting the most dollars out, you know, the most, most good out of every dollar. And, and, you know, the, I've said for years that, you know, the county should be in charge of the state highways too, and then we'd have better roads to drive on there. But anyway, it's, you know, it's, it's been improved all over the county. And so, you know, don't say it was just in all of that. You know, there was, there was certainly, there was the need and there was more growth. And, you know, how the dollars flow and how, how it justifies it, and I don't know, I'm not sure there's anything in government these days that the dollars should justify or, or the, you know, the system really works. But, you know, like right now, we're going into, if we have a wet season, you know, it's from now till May. And if we, if we don't get anything going, then the, you know, some of the main arterial roads up there, you know, are going to go another year without maintenance. And I, I really urge you guys immediately, they will see if, if they can't, can't get debris there on, on some of those roads. And, you know, Barb and Carl can, you know, get busy and come up with, you know, five miles, 10 miles, but to be just great at, you know, not, you know, not, and near what it ought to be, that adds some rock or some gravel, things like that, but, but to make some improvement. Because, Ken, we've got, you know, the, the wet season is hopefully coming and there is an opportunity to make some progress. And, and, you know, the fact that maintenance is, is far less over the last couple of years than it was, like Cambridgeville or something like that, with a lot of the townside roads and stuff, that's been a little bit up here.
So I just want to make one quick comment, Alan. You were talking about kind of the plan for all the roads throughout the county. That's one area that I think we've made a gigantic improvement on and it'll be massaged as it goes forward. The road advisory has been exposed to it, but Kevin Hawke, our road superintendent, brought forward a 10-year action plan where there is rain and reason, you know, short of emergencies to how- to how we were going to maintain the existing infrastructure. So I think that's a step, a huge step in the right direction for the existing road case. So just wanted to fill that out. And Mark had some comment, Mark Albertson said in the back, just...
Yeah, I just wanted to talk to these guys from Christmas Valley a little bit up north. You know, I've told some of you guys, you know, I remember the very first time I ever stepped foot in Christmas Valley, I was probably ten years, eleven years old. We went on a field trip with a bunch of kids from Christmas Valley and Fort Rock up to Portland Zoo and the Omsi. And when we came back, we came through Fort Rock and Christmas Valley and we let those kids out. I couldn't tell you exactly where it was, but I think it was like at the Fort Rocks store or right in there. And I remember these kids getting out of their vehicle, or out of the school bus and the dust was a foot deep. And this one kid trying to ride his bicycle home through that. And so that was my first experience with Christmas Valley. And like Barb brought up, she brought up a very good point is how the roads kind of keep your property values from grazing. And I think that's a very good point. And I, what I see is Christmas Valley is actually going to be the fastest growing part of Lake County. And we have to think that way for the future. Will there be problems? Yes. Will there be ways that we can do it? Yes. Do we need legal counsel? Absolutely. And like Dan said, he brought up a good point. If we do something, for one, it's got to be legal. For two, it's got to be repeatable. And so we don't have Joe Schmo down here with a two-mile easement wanting the county to come and grade his room too because he did, we did it in Christmas Valley. So we got to be very careful on how we do this. That's a very good point to Dan made. Whatever we do has to be repeatable. Another thing is, is that we're all on the same team. I'm not going to be giving somebody down here any better things than I'm going to be giving somebody up north. It's just not going to happen. Especially with my thoughts thinking that up north is actually going to be the leader in growth. And when we go and figure this out, like Kevin's done some creative things with the roads as far as like the Forest Service road that we hooked into up by Dog Lake, he got a federal, what was that, a grant of some kind, Kevin?
That was in process when it started, but we didn't complete it yet. It was a federal grant.
And so stuff like that, where we can go, the Fort Rock road, we can try to hook up with the feds. Derrick's Cave, um, different, the Dunes, maybe we can come up creative ways working with the feds to get more money that way. But I think like your private roads, we're definitely going to have to go through legal counsel. And either we take over possession of that road or we're, otherwise, we're going to have to repeat it. And we can't. There's no physical way that we can repeat doing private easements. The county will, more than likely, under legal counsel, have to take that road over. But, but I'm not saying we can't. But I'm just saying, these are some of the things that we have to look at. And, you know, however long ago it was, it's been forty years ago that the dust was ten inches deep, the change that it's come now, we can make more changes. You know, the road I lived on on the west side didn't get paved until Water Users Lane until nineteen eighty-five. And the only reason I remember that is because I was married about a year before it was paved. And so I don't think we need to be looking so much as what the county has or has it done, but what we can do as a group and as a team. And we definitely, we definitely have to be a team to make this work. What you guys are asking for is totally needed. There's no doubt about it. But let's focus on one road at a time, whether it's the water, the water tower or something that's got a bunch of businesses on it or the federal, the ones going to federal sites that we can, you know, get grants, whether they split with us. I just wanted to talk to you guys where I see things coming as a new person coming on that I'm actually excited about what we can do in those. And I wanted just to put you guys at rest that way, so.
Well, Mark, you're doing really great till you got to the one road at a time thing. If we're going to study one at a time and take a year on each one, then, you know...
That's not what I'm saying. I don't think, what I'm saying is, it's taken us a while to get here.
Yep.
And what you said about, do we need to put a timeline on here? I think we do. And that just keeps us rolling. You know, let's, let's set a short-term goal to get this road done or at least find the legal counsel of what we can and can't do. And then if we run into a block with legal counsel, let's figure out a different way to do it.
Yep.
It doesn't just end our discussion. You see what I'm saying? It, you know, we've just got to be creative. With Kevin being on board as the supervisor, road supervisor, and doing creative things, I think we're on the right track, so.
Biggest thing, taking back the book, Alan mentioned earlier, we'd have to start the momentum as opposed to just having a meeting and then six minutes is still a meeting. But if we can get a group together.
Can we complete that?
That would prioritize because of safety issues. I always hear more than once about this little lady had to walk two miles to get home. That's not at night. But the water tower thing is, is an infrastructure priority and you have to prioritize safety. Have to prioritize, maybe we have a county road that is, could be better aligned to someplace else or redestinated to someplace else to get the biggest bang for the buck. But the biggest thing is for a group to really keep the ball moving. Otherwise, I've seen too often, a ball is dropped on the floor and six years down the road is still laying there. Keep it moving.
Okay. Oh, use that up. Barb, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I appreciate it very much. And we're running away behind. Nick, apologize. You were a kind item.
I am today.
Ten forty-five, you're well behind, so step on up a little bit. You tried to get out of here.
Okay. Thanks, Nick. I'm Nick Johnson with L C R I. First off, I just want to thank the board for the recent conversation. I love it.
I'm not going to call him down.
Just transition.
Obviously, there is no issue.
Okay. Did you guys thank the conversation outside so we can hear the presentation? Put the picture, please.
Maybe pull up Mike a little closer.
Keep looking for stuff. So next, I just wanted to give you an update about the transition that L C R I is in right now. Jim Walsh has had to step down due to some ongoing health issues and I have filled his position as the executive director. Once Jim is recovered from the surgeries and procedures, he will be rejoining L C R I as a project advisor. So he'll be back soon and he'll still be involved with L C R I in the daily operations.
Well, you were probably hoping for a little bit more of a transition, Nick.
Yeah, it looked a little rough. So the market curve is pretty steep. I'm staying busy, but I appreciate it. I don't know if you're joining, so it's great. So next, I just wanted to let you guys all know that Bob Rogers will be rejoining L C R I sometime this month. He's going to be moving back to Lakeview. His position is funded through an R V P grant, and it's his development for USDA, which should fund his position for a body of gear. He's pretty lucky to have him back. He's going to be able to help us on a lot of different property experiences going on. So really forward to that. Three major projects we have going on right now. First one is what we're calling the Business Solar Project. And that's what Bob will be working on primarily, where he'll provide technical assistance to locally owned businesses and locally owned gear dealers to determine if they can find some energy savings to, whether it be weatherization improvements or solar installation. So it's, there's a lot of support for that. I think about forty-five businesses have already contacted us, wishing to participate in that. And that will go through year by year from now. We'll do technical assistance and we'll be doing additional funding to help subsidize those costs with the businesses that choose to move forward with rooftop solar installation. So if we can, if we can secure that funding, it should be a pretty impactful project on the economic scale for Lake County, Lakeview. We are still pursuing the Community Solar Project, which is a three-megawatt solar installation adjacent to town. It should benefit primarily hospitals, schools, and some low-income housing. The project is still in development and there's a lot of unanswered questions about that, but we're moving forward with it. Our third major project is what we're calling the Forest Resilience Study, and that's happening on the Sustaining Yield Unit. And we will be determining if alternative and/or innovative active management techniques paired with prescribed fire will be conducive to ponderous pine regeneration and its effects on overall forest health and resiliency.
So we need to study the lots and brick part now.
Now, you mentioned the Community Solar, that there are some unanswered questions. What are those questions?
There's a long list of them, but some of the major ones right now, that come to mind first would be things like transmission, plant capacity in the area, what the building structure is going to look like, who's going to handle that, what the ownership structure is going to look like. And I think we're not the only community that's struggling with these questions. It's pretty spread across all the other communities pursuing this project as well.
Now, I just noticed that Cora Shumway leaned forward with a tinct of beer. He's on the Board of Directors of the North Lake Health District. Is there anything on solar that might be able to benefit the Health District of schools up there also?
I don't know if there's anything there solar-wise that, we've been involved with so many other things lately that we haven't talked solar. So could there be something in the future? I don't know. Maybe?
That's probably something when Bob comes on, because he's spent time before up there looking and analyzing, working with businesses on retrofitting, you know, improving the energy efficiency of a lot, a lot of the different businesses out there. So maybe when Bob gets on, that's something.
Sure. Well, we're going to really reach out to North Lake County, get folks that there's an loan possible. So I think there's a lot of opportunities for that area.
So on the Community Solar and the county's planning, you have the draft.
Yes.
Give kudos to Mr. Burman Sedner, working on this draft. Lease option agreement on county property for that to come together. And you're working on the dividend, and it'll all cover the board of commissioners. So very interesting in the Community Solar, how that's going to work. So whenever we get back to where that's going to come before the board, maybe Bob will be on, whatever you build, and discuss how that framework's going to sort of work.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I guess in that draft form, just talk about a little bit is the amount of time you need. We threw some numbers in there, Dan threw some numbers in there for the lease option. Make sure that that's the right number for everything. What you're reviewing that?
So I got a chance to read that. It seems light and right timeframe for all the information that I have now.
Okay.
And it is a fairly extended time period for years, I think, and I think that's enough.
Well, for the benefit of the audience, can you elaborate a little bit more as far as the county involvement with the Community Solar?
As far as up to this point?
Yeah. And from this point forward?
So L C R I has been working with the county to identify a location to go with a three-megawatt solar installation.
Well, just, you came before the Board of Commissioners and we approved you to the county-owned properties. We approved for you to look at that, see if that would be a viable site. You looked at that with other sites and the county approved that that site, we would enter a lease option. So it has, it has been before the Board of Commissioners already.
Yeah, that's probably site of solar. And then the rest of it would be the transmission and working with the schools and other amenities.
Okay, yes. Great. Any other questions?
Next, this month or next month, when Bob will be back here.
He should be here this month.
This month.
About mid, mid, mid year or so.
Very good. Looking forward to seeing him.
Yeah, he brings a lot of energy to the table, so.
Offline, I want to catch up with you, Nick, on, you know, our original stewardship, well, our stewardship group and our original boundary designation.
Yeah.
The Sustaining Yield Unit and what the implications are for the stewardship going forward and opportunities. Yes. So we can chat about that offline.
Absolutely. That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right. George Desire, just work through these and get them...
Yeah. Alan came down. I know one of the reasons we scored this letter, intentional letter of support for what is going on in the North End of the county. I'd like to present this. Alan talked to me a whole week and a half ago about it. And during the time since then, I did reach out again to Dave Kerr, the superintendent. And so the letter, it reads, it's short and to the point, but it reads a little different than what you'd ask inasmuch as we've included North Lake School Board District fourteen and Superintendent Dave Kerr, along with the Chief Petitioner Alan Parks, in requesting that the Higher Education Coordinating Commission remove the northern end of Lake County from the COCC taxing district. That is the request. And I'll just read her, I'll click out, I'll sit up easy on there. The Lake County Board of Commissioners would like to acknowledge and support Chief Petitioner Alan Parks, the North Lake School Board District fourteen, and North Lake Superintendent David Kerr, request for the removal of the northern portion of Lake County from the Central Orange Community College taxing district, signed by the three commissioners if we choose to approve it.
That's good with you, Alan?
Yes.
And I reached out to Mr. Kerr myself. He emailed me back that he was in support. I had questions. I wanted to make sure that we, that there wasn't going to be services lost or dollars lost for the local school there. And Mr. Kerr was very comfortable with the impacts are going to be taken care of through other avenues, I guess you'd say. I can't elaborate on it. He's superintendent, but he's very comfortable. So I'm there, so I entertain a motion.
Even though this is a work session, I did tell Alan I would ask the board to consider approving this today and while he was present. And so I'm going to make a motion that we approve the letter I just read that will be going to the Higher Education Coordinating Commission on behalf of our North Lake citizen reading the taxing district. It's been impacted for about fifty years.
I'll second with the discussion of, for the public.
Motion been made and seconded. Further discussion?
Go ahead and explain the impacts you mentioned.
The...
Commissioner Shand says something about the impacts.
I was the one that said, when I reached out to Mr. Kerr, and I never brought the email back, but I was wanting to make sure if there was any fiscal or any programs that if they went, that this money was going towards those. And so Mr. Kerr responded. I don't have those emails with me. You're welcome to look at it. But the gist of it was, he's very comfortable that he believes that the impact by supporting Alan as the chief petitioner, as the superintendent, he's comfortable and he'll be fine. So, but I was the one that mentioned impacts. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Well, if we saw it.
Do you have a copy? We'll sign it and Alan can have it.
You don't want me to?
Pardon me? Oh.
He requested the letter, so we're going to give it to Alan, the original one.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's addressed to the Higher Education Coordinating Commission.
And she don't like, maybe send the original.
And she don't like, maybe send the original to the Higher Education Commission and then just give me a copy of that.
Okay.
That work?
And for the audience, Alan, can you elaborate on the process that ATCC has?
Yes. Do I need to be the speaker or?
I think we can hear you.
Anyway, the COCC taxing district was established in nineteen sixty-one. That became effective in nineteen sixty-two and it included the original Fort Rock School District. The Silver Lake School District, which is, they've now been combined, the Silver Lake School District opted out in the sixties and therefore they do not get taxed for it. And so one of the problems is that frankly, COCC doesn't know who's in and who's out among the students and the school itself. And over the years, there's been effort to provide some education in Northlake County from COCC and it has failed at every turn. And we are in the taxing districts. We have a, we have an obligation for a bond that passed in the early eighties and that obligation, if we are excused from the taxing district, we're still liable for that bond payment until it's paid off in, it's about another ten years, I believe. But over the years, of course, to go back further, we didn't have a high school until nineteen ninety-one. And so at that point, we've had relationships with Treasure Valley Community College, Shremecada, Blue Mountain, and I believe a few others, as well as COCC. And then just a few years ago, we ended up with an excellent partnership with Klamath Community College. And so then as my arguments go along, I find out that Klamath Community College is serving more than thirty high schools around the country, a half a dozen of them are even in California. They've figured out how to make this business model of supporting distance learning at high schools. They've figured out how to make it work and they've made it work well. And then the next step is they provide education services to the majority of high schools in COCC's territory. So it's kind of a housekeeping issue that we should have never been in the taxing district in the first place because of our distance for commuting and our sparse population for local classes. So anyhow, that's where we are now. This has been at this for more than a year to work through the process of being excused from that taxing district. And as, as most of us know, that typically a board, whether it be county commissioners, the school board, or the Higher Education Coordinating Council, you follow the advice given by staff on a particular subject. And at this point, it's important that the staff of Higher Education Commission provide positive information to the nine-member board that they approve our request. And so we've got county commission in favor, the local school board in favor, the ESD has a resolution in favor. And there's no, no one in opposition, with the exception of the COCC board, which their biggest issue is that they don't want to start a landslide where other areas would want to withdraw as well. And, and we've submitted that you can't find another community in quite our circumstance where we have, the old Fort Rock School District has about a population of one person per square mile and two thousand square miles and two thousand people, roughly. Okay? It's not a big enough population base to conduct classes. It just doesn't work. It's been tried. And, and then it's too far from downtown Christmas Valley to the COCC campus is slightly over a hundred miles. And that's just too far to commute on a daily basis to try to make that work. So anyhow, I believe we're unique in that. And so with your cooperation, your help, you know, we give the staff there, the Higher Education Commission, a little more ammunition to persuade the commission.
So Alan, let me ask you a quick question. And we've kind of talked about this, but we were always on the phone, so it's a lot better here, face-to-face. Have you gotten any sense from Patrick Crane, who's the Director of Community Colleges and Workforce Development here in Oregon, as well as Kyle Thomas in his office? When we had a conference call, and I think I told you about this, it's been a good two weeks ago, probably three weeks ago, Ann sent in here, our treasurer, Dave Knowles, our tax assessor, myself, Dr. Gutierrez was on the phone, and Patrick and Kyle. And he threw out a real red flag to me, but I think he was just stating what they could do. And that was, they could convert the taxing district over KCC, reduce the rate from sixty-two cents to forty-one cents, which you folks are opposed to, and we wrote a letter supporting that proposal to not do that. But his statement on the phone, and he was asking me directly how I felt about it, they turn that around, make it KCC, and then heck has the authority to just impose the tax across the rest of the county. And I told him, Dave Knowles, his eyes got big, I said, there's no way, as one commissioner, and I doubt the board, would ever support something like that. If we were ever to have a taxing district in Lake County, whatever that looked like for KCC, it would come from the voters. It would come as a result of the voters needing to weigh in. And then he went on to say that part of that process would then be, if we were to choose to do something like that or pursue it, they would come out, a group of them to the communities, and start to have educational sessions on it. So I don't know if you and Patrick have talked about that at all?
No, we've had that conversation, but there was one more sentence in what Patrick said, that in those rules, they can divert us into a different district if there's no opposition.
Right.
If there is a petition of opposition, then they cannot do that. So I said, I told Patrick, I said, you answer your question. You can't do it because I'm there. And we will block it. And the bigger it gets, the more the adverse vote will get.
Well, and that's what I told him. I said, you know, at some point in time, the countywide or part of the county, as you alluded to, which made a lot of sense to me, you know, the southern part in particular, ever thought that it would be beneficial to be in the Klamath Community College taxing district. The last thing they want to do is incite our citizenry by trying to shove something down their throat. I mean, it's up to the citizens to vote on that. And part of that is educating them on what the benefits would be, and they'll go and mark their ballot accordingly as to what they do or don't support. So, anyway.
I've given one of these to Ken and asked, but here's a map. The colors aren't good.
Yeah, I printed one off over there after you told me.
Okay. But anyhow, these are the areas that are not in the Community College District. And those are the areas that we're representing as.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So thanks for bringing that letter forward. We'll move on.
I need to take a quick break. You can move on.
Okay. I'll be right back. Take it quick. Supposedly five-minute rate.
Okay.
Everybody looks so happy.
Also, what could the ATCC need to go to the legislature at this time?
All right. Start going.
After the, the.
Hey, good to see you.
Higher Education Commission should act on this on December thirteenth. Then the next step is going to the legislature for approval.
Do we have any gut feeling on ATCC action on the thirteenth?
Just what I said, that if Patrick and Kyle support it wholeheartedly, then I think there's a fairly good chance. The downside is the chairman of the ATCC board is Neil Bryant, ex-senator and Resmin Van.
That's great.
Supporter of COCC.
Every day. Are you going to be at the December thirteenth? That is a Tuesday?
Yep, will be Friday.
No idea. Yeah. I say Tuesday, I don't know, because I think fifteenth is the first. Good, good. Good to see you again.
Oh, no.
So you learned forward on this?
I learned. A lot of people are making congratulations at the same time.
Yeah, well, that's kind of like when someone has an anniversary, do you assume that congratulations or sympathy coming through? There's two tags. So it'll be, it'll be fine. Just go easy, think things through. It'll be great.
And that's going to be in Salem?
I imagine so. I don't know for sure.
So does that work?
I hope so.
Okay. There's a joke.
It's going to get by the.
You will.
Yeah.
And then it's going to get by the legislature.
Yes.
I understand.
Downhill. Easy slide.
Yeah.
Hey, how you doing?
Hey, my friend.
Yeah.
So sometime between now and Christmas, I've got to get up there again and have breakfast.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you buying Dan?
Yeah, I can bring the whole family.
I did last time.
Then it's his turn.
It is my turn.
Ken could come up and buy breakfast too.
No, Dan's buying, so I'm going to bring my whole Arkansas family.
Yeah. Have a great day.
You guys take care.
You too.
Where's your coffee?
It's in my office.
She probably needs a copy of that. I got it down. You want me to bring that? I'll go get on the phone and.
No, it's okay. I'm so sorry.
Guess you didn't trust your lawyer.
Is he interested at all in coming up there?
Drink water? Yeah, I pulled that up. And I saw the taxing, the counties without.
You got extra work. Yeah. But also.
I have drink water.
No, I called.
Community College.
You gave that a good sense then.
There's rates from twenty-two cents to a buck and a half.
You know, everybody.
Yeah.
And then it all get in the bar.
Yeah.
It seems to be.
No.
Almost.
Well, our schools are funded by them. And I talked to them. Those tax rates.
Yeah.
For all these districts, pull it over the board.
It was kind of somewhat attached when.
Well, and that's the missing link, when maybe fifty was brought in, that we were able to really value it, make things more in line. As soon as you know what that is, then I can put it on agenda for this and then I still have to go through here.
But they could do that quickly.
Or have a special situation.
Yeah. And I'm told that's all.
The next thing I read is that.
Sure.
You look at tuition rates, or you can operate under them all the time. There's all of us have an out-of-state rate and an in-state rate.
Well, let's see how it goes. I'm kind of a COCC, that's an in-district rate. Norbit, wait till.
But isn't it true along those same lines? Because I've talked to many of you on this, that out-of-state rates are like twenty-five dollars or better than for Northlake students that are in the original taxing district. It's nine dollars or eight dollars at some point. Well, that's, he was telling me it was eight.
Eight dollars.
At COCC, man, it's twenty-five bucks, I believe.
Yeah, he was telling me that, hey, maybe I, maybe he was really not all in discussion. Some of the students that were employees paid full amount, he's not part of the taxing district. Some of them.
No, that's how, I think that's how it should be.
Well, that's true, Chris, you know, and if you have.
Well, for me, I have to act if you're home. You know, you're in front.
I didn't say I didn't want to. You rolled your eyes.
Well, no, I just.
Thank you.
That's why I was speaking.
Maybe the other left, I was probably leaving.
We started a story and.
My mom.
And they brought.
I'm going to be drunk.
The graduate prime will take a dog and just go from there. And that person was pretty.
And then when I go back, I go back to Primeville.
And.
And it'll go back.
I just chuckled because she was.
No, I got to a doctor's point.
No, I think.
She wasn't so black, right? Outside the district. She did something.
Really sore. I mean, I have drank. It's really sore.
Are you doing physical therapy?
Yeah, he had to rattle that. I think it was because of this.
This week, yeah.
Overworked. Ten days.
All right, okay.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll come back in session at twenty minutes after twelve. We're going to try to.
Have you got my cards?
Just pursue and get through this. So Mr. Hawk, Presidents Don't Be Formed, should be pretty quick, I believe. Well, I probably shouldn't say that today.
We hope, we hope so. Just in comparison, in case you guys lost your copies, I did make somewhere, this is a comparison, the old ones, if you don't have right this minute. There's the old. So in an attempt to make this document more user-friendly, which is what we utilize at the transfer sites, to coordinate the cost of garbage disposal with sometimes folks who want to argue the cost of garbage disposal, it needs to be cleaned up because in the last month, there's not concern, but some confusion in the old form in comparison with the new allows that to happen. So the new form doesn't change any of the prices, it just cleans up some of what we thought were the discrepancies or subject matter left open for argument, I guess, is the honest way to put that.
There's no added fees, no change in fees, there's just clarification.
There's no, there's no change, except for worth noting, what we've talked about is the consistency of appliances and what used to regard or cost one item versus others, we need to have something more consistent because that's one of the things that comes into play for, say, arguing a heavy transfer sites. This consistently charges fifteen dollars. Water heaters were fifteen dollars before, refrigerators were, so that's what that does.
Thanks for your work on that.
I'll have to thank my helper, because she did a big portion of that.
Thanks, Kristy.
But anyway.
So with that, I think appropriate would be either approve this by consensus or by motion. And then if it's not, it will be probably pretty soon put on the website.
Yeah, I'd like to get it into the, I mean, unless, and I'm not saying I'm not open for suggestions, so if there's something that we need to talk about, I just want it to be as simple for all the constituents as possible, so.
You went over it prior to this.
Yeah.
It's, you've made some changes relative to shrinking things down. You don't have the medium-sized rigs and those types of things. I'm fine with it.
Well, and I asked, I asked the young lad from Christmas Valley that we hired on, I said, how many times do you ever? said, how many times do you ever evaluate that a seven-foot pickup bed comes through here? And he goes, well, and he said, honestly, it just leaves somebody the availability for me to get in an argument with him about how much is in the actual pickup. So he got short beds and long beds, and let's cut it off at that, and that's what this form attempts to do, so. I'm good with it.
Consensus?
Yes.
One question, you got washing machines installed, you've got water heaters, I assume that the kitchen dishwasher would fall in the washing machine?
Yeah, wash, dry, microwave any appliance, we just put...
Covered under, et cetera.
Yeah, we just put, we just listed as many of them as what was on the old form, so.
Consensus of the board, thank you, thanks for the work coming.
Melanie Allen sent it to you electronically, so you can throw it on the website. Is she here?
Okay, so, now, Kevin, we have your additions at this time. We have the scales, are my out of...
I just have the scales, that's it. That is mine, that is the addition.
That is the addition, okay.
I was in, we were at ODOT training on Thursday for winter communications and so forth, and I didn't get this surprise. In front of you for scales should be three quotes. One is from Northwest, one is from American, both of those scales are Rice Lake scales. The lowest quote is Fairbank scales. All of these scales are exactly the same size, they're forty-seven foot long, and they are eleven foot wide. Forty-seven foot for transactions that we will do, are doing, will be plenty enough scale. With all of these, we have the option, but with Fairbanks seem to be a lot more simplistic. We can add twenty-three foot scales to this later on, like if we so need to. The only thing that we cannot weigh in its entirety is our own trucks, but that is not for sale or commerce, we are just documenting versus what we claim we're getting in, just as, I guess, a study note for now, so that we can study as much as possible in the next year. But we can still axle length with our own trucking, those transfer trailers that we have. But everything else, as far as our customers and pickup trucks with trailers and vendors, all fit on these scales. The thing that I liked about Fairbanks naturally was, if you look at the prices, number one, but they have a twenty-five-year warranty on a lot of key parts and pieces that go along with the wear and tear on these scales. Probably in the near future, you'll see signs that say stock before entering scale, and you will on these new ones for sure, because we have a lot of traffic that just come flying in hot, and they just slam the brakes on these scales, and that pretty much really wears everything out. Scales should be a wear item, they should be a long-lasting investment, so we'll try to control that.
One thing you mentioned I really like, Kevin, is they can be added on to if in the future there's a need for that as community grows or whatever, so I like that very much.
Yeah, all three vendors actually offered an option to be able to do that, but in talking with all three of them, it seemed as though Fairbanks was the most simplistic in the event that we ever wanted to put seventy foot on scale. So they've basically done the twenty-three foot platforms, and that seemed to be the most simplistic, so.
I think we have it on, I think we have it done on tomorrow too.
Okay. All right. And then I can get on the list, because this will, won't be, even though we're enjoying some nice weather right now, this will be a spring, this will be a spring install. I don't know that we wanna get involved in trying to pour concrete puddings and cover them up in freezing weather and different things, so we'll get on the list, and there's a four-month, there's a four-month out anyway on scale, so we'll start in the spring.
If you have information, I will be here tomorrow to have engagement in the Christmas Valley area, let them support it.
Thank you. Any questions about those?
Thank you for being here today, listening to all the discussions.
Yeah. We'll talk again soon. Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
All right, Mr. Berman. Amendment number three, airport apron maintenance project.
This is on the milestone of the project, the FAA and Oscar would negotiate dollars to get everything that we needed to do out there, so we're on that supplemental grant that we did not get, but we're still in the running of it, we're still working on that, but that's part of the milestone of the completion of the project. It's kinda changed, well, the actual timeframe of the completed is still there, it's just some of the other stuff they changed, so we have the amendment to the agreement, so just kinda wait for signatures to move it forward on the apron project.
Very good.
Very good.
We'll take it up tomorrow for...
All right.
Thanks for all your...
Don't thank us, thank God you got this.
I do every day.
There you go. All right. Did I do that in a public setting? I did.
Thank you, Steve, and Mike.
Most nice.
All right, so, next item is opt of recommendation. Congratulations, Mark. So, Melanie, this is for action consideration tomorrow.
Being noted that what Stacy Dany submitted in her recommendation was, Ken Testman, I've been on it for twelve years, Deanna Walls is on it, Kathy Miles has been on it, Kathy, we need to cross that off because she's declining, so there's a vacancy going, that needs to be addressed. Okay, two vacancies. I'll pardon her to be on it, but if you wish to substitute, that'd be fine, thank you.
So the recommendation comes from Stacy to us, correct, is that the, so will we have a full recommendation for the three positions from Stacy tomorrow?
Don't have the third one, Kathy Miles.
So, Ken, you're wanting to stay on as...
I told Stacy that if I was needed, I would be on, she wanted a good transition, but if one of my fellow commissioners wanted to get involved, I'm willing to step aside, but I'm willing to be on if need be.
Okay, well, we can take that tomorrow.
Okay. Next item is, is the sheriff or Paul coming down for any of the vehicle discussion?
He said he would be here, but I haven't heard from him yet.
Okay, so, what I would like for them to be here because this is going to be quite a decision for the board of commissioners tomorrow.
Okay.
So, what we can do is jump on down to the computer purchase and then give you a chance to run down and see if all or the sheriff is around.
Do you wanna do the outfitting still, or do you wanna wait on that too?
Pardon me?
Do you wanna wait on the outfitting also?
Yeah, that's all to do with the vehicles, the, well, the...
This is for the past vehicle that we're...
For the past vehicles, I would like for them to be here when we have those discussions. I'm more versed on all of it, but I don't believe other commissioners are more versed on everything that may be said or wanted. So let's jump to the computer purchase.
So, I reviewed that, we have a replacement program to make sure that no computer goes past its useful date. The routine computers are all in good working condition. And, let me just go to this page, there'll be six standard computers and two laptops, and then three specialized computers, which are quite expensive, but we worked on getting that price a little down to the bare minimum. I told them, we don't need Cadillacs, we just need some reliable Fords and Chevys, so, I feel good about it. Joshua's great working with me also, so, I think, I feel good about moving forward with this year's purchase.
So Melanie, were these all part of, these were in our budget for this year?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just, you've got to this point.
Well, she's been very routine, she's worked very hard, and the prices have come down compared to what we have budgeted and everything, it's very, very conservative budgeting, looking toward next year's fourth budget and goes and everything, yeah.
Very good. I appreciate it very much.
He said, only need to be a Chevy or Ford.
Say what?
He said, only needs to be a Chevy or Ford, only discriminate against Dodge.
Yes. Well, so what I mean, I'll clarify. Okay, but just for the audience at home, I deal with some tech savvy guys who want the best degreeist in, they want us to have the best degreeist because they think that's the best thing that works, but we, I'm trying to be conscious with our tax dollars and get what's necessary, not what's wanted. So the original quote was twenty thousand dollars, and I said, whoa, off the brakes here, we can't do that. I might not have, something might come up, one, and two, I might need to save everything I have for next year. So, I was trying to be super conscious on that and...
That's actually what your obligation is.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Josh and...
I thought maybe I should clarify.
All public servants should be conscientious of expanding public funds.
Yeah.
So, thank you for that, that's on the agenda for tomorrow. So the only thing we have left, unless I'm mistaken, is the layer uplifting and the vehicle recommendation on purpose purchases.
So, just because of the time, do you think it would be good to have Melanie contact them about doing your tomorrow, because that's when they do the decision?
I think that's very appropriate, my mind went there after I made that comment, is let Melanie give her presentation to us today at work session, and be sure and let Paul and the sheriff know that tomorrow's the decision-making. I believe she's had discussion with everybody on the vehicle committee.
Yeah.
That you've been able to touch base with.
So, outfitting the vehicle, the pickup is the 2019, that should be in within this week or next week, hopefully. This is the same set of bids that I sent out earlier this year till we're in day wireless. I just wanted to make sure I had the final cost, they were going back and forth about having a cage for a canine unit, and they decided to go against that. So, this is the final cost with that cage, same bid.
And for discussion clarification, the twenty-six thousand one hundred ninety dollars is per vehicle?
Yes.
And that's just for this portion, there's still, there's quite a cost for outfitting that goes through local large farms, is another six thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's about three thousand dollars a vehicle. And that's for the bumpers and the specialized, and then winches.
I just wanted to make sure that the board all understands this isn't all-inclusive of completely outfitting these vehicles, and there's other costs to just continue to rise.
So, outfitting a senior vehicle with Volkswagen is about thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, and if you look at the vehicle purchase spreadsheet that I made, it shows it more accurately. It has the purchase cost for two vehicles, and then it has outfitting with both.
So we just went right into the next item, go ahead and hit that.
Okay, so, the vehicle committee that earlier this year, and they decided to recommend a purchase for the juvenile department, and then a purchase for the sheriff's department, one vehicle each, and then Paul wasn't able to be at that meeting, and he wanted us to reconsider purchasing two vehicles for him and none, or the juvenile department at this year. So that was a tough decision that the vehicle committee had to assess, and ultimately they decided to award the purchases to the sheriff's department, they found that he had the greatest need, and so, next year, the plan is that juvenile will get one vehicle, and the sheriff's department will get one vehicle.
So can I elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure.
So the only way that the vehicle committee accepted this was because of, undersheriff Hubble offered to sell two carbillage trailers, put that money towards the purchase. The sale of these two vehicles that are replacing, he said these vehicles need to go, not to be reused down, so we accepted that. So those dollars would go towards the purchase. And then on the outfitting, which I believe it's reflected in this, unless I'm mistaken, he's willing to take out of his mountaintop money, four thousand dollars per vehicle, and those are rough numbers, it might be closer to five, to reduce the cost of that outfitting. So, that's the only way, budget-wise, because the budget was not there. We budgeted for outfitting these vehicles, but we budgeted what we knew that were going to be according to, back during our budget time, what they used to cost us to outfit, which was around eight thousand dollars, correct?
Last year, it was just gonna be over twenty.
Over twenty, eight thousand dollars difference, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, as this comes to us, you have to have the whole story of if we go with two sheriff's vehicles, and that's up to us as you get this presentation to us, is the only way to not completely deplete the vehicle fund and ask for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars put in at this next budget year, is to be able to take those revenues in. Now then, on a budget-wise, now you're depleting some of your mountaintop, I can't remember the name of that fund, down, so it would need to be replenished. So the cascade effect of this purchase, if we pass just the vehicles, as we haven't had our work session about projections on revenues for this year and next year, which may not be as favorable as they have in the past, so, Melanie, I didn't want to take away, but I wanted to fully explain.
Thank you.
And the juvenile vehicle is twelve years old, I think it's twelve.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, I thought I was missing, but I did assure that department head that if we, as a board, did decide to go with the sheriff's vehicle, that we needed to make that one the priority for this next year, because of, the old days, through what I've supported of doing the cascade down from these vehicles, doesn't work anymore, because these vehicles with investment, thirty thousand dollars in to outfit them, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars for the vehicle. Melanie's done some great research, these need to, the goal, not that they all make it, the goal is for these to stay in service to a hundred and fifty thousand miles minimum to return your investment on them. Some of them won't make it, you know, we, our fleet manager, Melanie does a great job of keeping track, but when we're investing taxpayer dollars in that amount, it doesn't make any sense anymore to take them out of the sheriff's site and roll them down to somebody else when you have that much investment into them. They need to stay in like use, so, and I probably missed quite a bit, but that's the relative overview of what we've been working on in the struggles as a committee.
Well, I have, I'm sorry. Well, just a quick question, and just one comment. May I say the comment first? When you talk about budget and reviewing revenues, we are short from our projected revenue for this budget year, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That's a given, due to the reduction in the revenue we're receiving off the pipeline. Second thing is a question, Melanie, maybe you already said, but option one and two, what are, what are the differences with this?
I talked over before she had a chance to explain.
Yeah, so, I'd love to explain a little bit. So, last year, we purchased police pursuit vehicles for the sheriff's department. They're great, they're meant to perform highly, they don't have the same governance and limitations that a standard stock vehicle that's available to the public has. We purchased those in hopes that outfitting would be less... Um, we purchased those in hopes that upfitting would be less expensive and that we'd get more miles. Um, personally, I don't want to gamble that we're going to get a hundred and seventy-five thousand to two hundred thousand miles on these vehicles because something could go wrong. And so we've tested them and things, it makes me weary to say, yeah, this is what we're gonna do because it's the best. Um, they work out to be about the same cost per mile, but my main reason, what I prefer to do is option two, which is a normal vehicle, which we've been using historically. Um, they are proven to be great, as far as we can tell, there's a few exceptions that we encounter. Um, I'd like to purchase the regular ones because I want to ensure a better beginning fund balance because I don't want Jake to go without next year. You know, they go up north in this vehicle and they need something safe and reliable. And if times get hard, I'm scared that this budget will be something looked at first. And I don't want to put anyone in a position where we're worried about breaking down on the side of the road in Fort Rock late at night on a call or something. So I would, I, I think the police pursuit vehicles could be fantastic. Um, I feel like it's something that we can consider in the future when funds are more secure possibly. But for the time being, I think we should stick with history and know what we know was to be true and not gamble.
Well, I totally agree with the financial side of things and I guess even if finances weren't an issue. And I know it takes a while, like a good period of time to evaluate the police pursuit vehicles. But I guess I'm wondering if we have another county or another organization in order, just for ready reference, that has had those in their fleet and similar type driving needs. If we couldn't call upon those folks to say it was worth the extra money and in service and durability or it isn't?
Um, I have researched that actually and in Clamath County they have a field. But with budget concerns, they haven't been able to get them in a while. And he said they're great, they're built tough, they're great on these back roads and stuff, but they aren't able to get them all the time.
Due to cost?
Yeah, they're expensive, they're quite, quite a bit more and...
Okay, she can check that, I asked her to research many different things and she has stepped up and done a lot of research.
Yeah.
I had kind of thought she had, I just wondered if you could handle that.
And also I spoke to the vehicle committee independently, uh, the ones that have been available, on what they prefer. The general consensus is that we should go with the regular vehicles and not police pursuit vehicles. And, um, I'll let you guys decide what you think is best. I, everyone on the committee has said, well, we're not police officers, we're not sheriff's deputies, we can't tell you exactly what these needs are. So it's kind of, they kind of felt embarrassing, yeah, this is what we should do. But budget wise, I think they all thought it was best to be conservative.
Concur.
And, and so, um, her numbers in there show, the numbers that she showed as far as, um, we were conservative whenever we figure what we can sell these two cargo trailers for in these two vehicles was conservative on that amount. So we could very, get very lucky, or we use GovDeals and go online that we could bring in more revenues than what we're thinking. We're hopeful, but we are at a point, we need to get a decision made tomorrow so that we get ordered. So we don't run into that same swap over into next budget year that we ran into this year. And then the following year, we would like to be able to get things ordered right after the first of July and get the, get on the right rotation.
Yeah.
So anyways, kudos to Melanie, she's put a lot of work into this.
Thanks Melanie.
All right, did you have anything else to add Melanie?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay, so I have addition. We have our district attorney for Lake County that resigned. The, the process is the governor will appoint a district attorney. Talking with Commissioner Degru, Eric Degru in Clamath County, they had set a precedence of requesting the governor to allow a committee to look at the applicants and, and I don't have the details. I have an email into him and I don't know if they made an actual recommendation of one or more or how they done it. But I would like for this board of commissioners to send a letter to the governor that we have the option of doing that same kind of process here.
Make a recommendation to the state.
Yeah. And so I don't have the, I've asked for the guidelines their committee that they put together, I can't speak to it too much, but it, it's really sort of more or less an unbiased committee that doesn't have a whole lot of skin in the game, so that it's not, whoever's selected, they don't feel like they owe somebody or otherwise or whatever. So interested in what they, their makeup was, but I, I think, I think they said pretty nice precedence that we might go take a shot.
I think we should have at least a recommending, say so in the appointment.
So consensus of board to send a letter to the governor?
Yes.
Request that, thank you guys. I had to add Melanie to Derek, Melanie naturally will vault you to put that letter together, so we want to act on that right away.
Yep.
Please on updates. I, I, I really want to get forward, um, as a cooperating agency in these wilderness characteristics, the inventory that was done on our BLM lands. I am emotionally beside myself of what happened that doesn't do us any good whatsoever. I've sitting in the meetings as a cooperating, cooperating agency representing the county. Um, we also have Soil and Water District is cooperating agency and so is Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. They don't have MOUs together for us to even sign yet to be the cooperating agency, but we're going through the process. Reached out to Congressman Walden, said that this impacts our ranchers in, in my opinion, in a very negative way. Um, so I think the timeframe is very aggressive, it's at the tail end of the timeframe. Be straight honest with you, you guys understand the way they talk a lot more than I do because you've been on the other side as an agency representative. I'm not saying the direction that the Cavillman are going, but they're, they're looking at possibly a consultant to respond to some of the things there. I don't know and I know, talking with Justin Farrell, his board maybe want to contribute a little bit of money that way. And I'm just sort of filling out what this board thought, um, if we should be, if I should reach out and try to be a team player of pulling funds together possibly for a more professional response to the whole process than just me as a commissioner and I'll take the shot. I, whenever you get into these things, it is unbelievable. And as cooperating agency, we almost only have a seat at the table, our state isn't as strong as what our constituents want us to have, so.
No, I think it's appropriate to look to a professionally done, put together response of people who deal with this day in and day out and are very, you know, you're gonna have a lot of good input, which is why I said, but I think they could pay, you know, the academy's willingness to bring someone on to help assist us in our...
I, I really, yeah, and we've, we've danced around this on other ones over the years as this board, whether we needed to maybe reach out to a consultant or not. I think this time, honestly, it might be the time that we reach out though.
Well, the layers, as you alluded to, Commissioner, when you talked about Congressman Walden, you had a good visit and I just breached the subject and said I knew you were gonna be visiting, but the layers of restrictions on these lands, it's gotta stop sometime or the, the indication that we're gonna be blocked off public lands is coming true.
Well, and I know one thing for sure, emotional statements are emotional statements. Facts is the only way that we make a difference in this process. And so that's, that's where I'm at. I honestly believe that all the way back, their inventory, which has ended up being about one point six million acres in the RBLM history, is done wrong and not in line, but I don't have factual information to back up my emotional thoughts on that.
So the thing, as you recall, the direction to consider wilderness characteristics and that was a court order, we have to consider all resources, including for wilderness.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess I should clarify, this is all from a settlement, Honda lawsuit against the BLM and the settlement, had, they had to go back and redo their inventory of wilderness characteristics and Honda also got a paycheck out of it on top of it. And our, our, our agency is tasked with this. So ironic that the RMP that was adopted back in two thousand and three, which did address some of the wilderness characteristics, what? There's a technicality that the Honda doesn't believe was done correctly. To go from what, I can't remember the numbers then to today is unbelievable. And the most, one of the most unbelievable parts is to cherry stem and they use this all the time. They can take a well or a road or anything and cherry stem it out and everything around it has wilderness characteristics. It doesn't make any common sense to...
I fully agree with that and just one area that got a big block up here that may have wilderness characteristics. But then it's connected by a thread to another piece over here and it's all made a whole.
Yeah.
That's not an option. Most of the aspects I would strongly contest is those appendages and the cherry stems.
Yeah, so anyways, I, I sort of wanted to get that out there to the full board and sort of...
But if we go with the consortium, we need to identify what the consultant will address.
That, there is the challenge is a lot of times consultants want to go with a broad brush and I, I think you make a good point, we need to narrow it down what the board of commissioners would like to...
Obviously a combination, well, as far as a cooperating agency, we're pretty much limited to social and economics and demographics, that's what we put in there. The federal agencies does not have sociologists, they have a truckload of biologists and a truckload of fisheries and et cetera. But they don't have a sociologist to address that, they don't have economists to address the economics. So that's one thing that, and that's one part of this group I've been a part of in California and into Southern Sustainable Forest Action Group, is to try to get the agencies to address adequately the social and the economics of small communities. What Honda will use, they use this research firm and they'll tell them, we want you or to address the social and economic benefit of wilderness. And of course that company will come back with this grandiose wilderness is, is good. Because they were directed what to address and we did a counterpoint to that. So we need this, we have the consultant to address the social and economic truly. But also the consortium needs to address the rationale of the configuration of these blocks. Like we're talking about cherry stems and attached to another block by a thread and stuff like that, that is asinine.
Well, and those two things, socioeconomics and configuration of wilderness. And because of the joint, the WSA doesn't make it have wilderness characteristics, that just strikes me, but that's emotional too. Um, so what I'm asking for is basically, and I'm here and it is consensus for me to check into that, possibly, possibility of partnering up or what it would take to have a consultant.
I would agree. Let's hope with the Cavillman Association, they may know of entities.
And we all know the one that's out there that has showed some interest and so I believe that's the one that the Cavillman are probably going with. So anyways, this gives me the avenue to have some discussion and then it'll be brought back of a cost if...
And the other thing is they come up with three options. One is very minimum social company wilderness characteristic and a lot of public use, so it remains. And the other top one is a lot of wilderness characteristics, very little public use, so they would probably go to be wilderness characteristic estimation. The one in between is a mix of the two and I've expressed concern about that, that is litigation right and left.
You're talking the categories and as a cooperating agency, there's only, there's limited number of other things that you can discuss and everything out there, but...
Well, those categories you're talking about, Commissioner, um, if you look at category three, which will be whatever they come up with, is very, very strict. Category two can be interpreted by either side. Absolutely. And then category one, there's only about three or four of them on the whole hundred and twelve or fifteen. So point well taken. The other thing in the timeframe, they're just hammering down on this, is there are alternatives for managing these three different categories. They will adopt alternatives, the Ridge Mar and E have three different alternatives. As board of commissioners back then, we sent a letter of support of no action alternative. So now they're looking at alternatives for these wilderness, wilderness characteristics. We can submit our own alternatives as a board of commissioners. I haven't come up with any myself, whenever you think of the three categories that you're putting in there because it's, those categories almost give you the only alternative you can have. I've always been on books as saying, I support wilderness someplace in the desert, over there. And get rid of the WSAs, WSA is an abbotross that was not intended to be hung forever around MX. There's two areas that affects Lake County that I've talked to some ranchers and things that would make good wilderness if we got rid of the WSAs. And ranchers said, I can work with that. The other one is a local permit piece utilized but acts in part in county, so I hate to press that.
I know where you're talking about. You know, that, you're touching on what is one of the biggest problems I have with this is we know three and a, three point six million acres or whatever it is, BLM, Lake County's BLM district goes outside Lake County, that there's some lands out there that are beautiful and they have some wilderness characteristics. But their boundaries and what they decided to consider wilderness characteristics went broad brush. I don't think you would get very many people that wouldn't say there is places in Lake County that's worth protecting. And this is way too much of a broad brush, it takes in way too much and as you mentioned, the future lawsuits are just stage weight.
But boundaries is a concern.
All right, so consensus of the board, obviously, ask them for a lot of consensus today, I will follow up on some of that. If you guys want to spend any time and think of alternatives, I will definitely, you can bring that board and bring them forward.
I've got Justin, thanks for working on, so I'll delegate it to Mark.
Thank you, Mark. All right, any other leads on updates?
I've got a few.
Okay.
We can still go as in Ontario for a sage county meeting, as you might have brought back leaving that to the listening, non-listeners. The state had to come up with a sage forest management plan to sort of the peace and wellness service that we protect sage forest habitat. And I spent probably three years on that. Protecting against the listening of the sage forests is critical, go all through the western United States or else we'll lose all of our ranching communities. But at that meeting that's brought up earlier, the Raisland Fire Protection Agency have stepped up to be a critical point, a critical player in safeguarding sage grounds habitat. Also, we had a professor from Yale University down on the subject of wild horses, she's doing a publication that focused on Mustang policies, adoption, and the wild horse, they debut training facility group, she complained of, so we obtained her, had got her with her and with her the next day. Basically, we stress the, that the ranching folks out there loves the horses, it's just a matter of compatible mode of use with livestock. And she was duly impressed with the community leaders as he spoke, being a ranching community. So I think we'd rather get on, put on a map wherever she comes out with her publications. Another thing, I was at the Grand Conference, that's where you meet a lot of folks, and I would say that we meet one gentleman, he's the past president of this company, I can't name him at the time. And that company is working with another company more locally. And within a couple of years, we may have backup redundancy all the way to the pine. I won't know until Thursday, I have a phone call to this gentleman, find out for sure. But if we get, what we've got now is forty-eight strands of copper coming from Central Link and that goes down five, six, ten days. And forty-eight strands is quite a bit of capacity, so we were able to get them to increase their booster on a couple of years back, which gave us the option to go to Paisley and the option to go to Warner Valley. But if we get this connection to the pine, that's ninety-eight strands, we have twice what Central Link has. And that would increase our capacity here that we, we won't be able to use it today, but tomorrow, when business come in, it's about, if you have it, you can grow. So fingers are crossed that within a couple of years, we might be able to get that done. I don't know Thursday on the phone call. On the KCC, I went to their meeting, you know, Board of Director's meetings to kind of let, let the board know where the county was, we had some misinformation, leaving up to that. Basically, as Commissioner Shance learned, that it really takes a vulgar people to join a district, not, so we had a nice discussion with that meeting. That's about all I have.
Anything else to come before? Will the churn have a nerdy?
Very efficient, I mean, work session.